Thankfully acknowledge that our meeting is taking place on occupied Coast Salish land. We pay respect to Coast Salish elders, past and present, and extend that respect to their descendants and to all Indigenous people. To acknowledge this land is to recognize the history of physical and cultural genocide and settler colonialism, which continues to displace Indigenous people today. It is also to recognize these lands, these waters, and their significance for the resilient and wise peoples who continue to thrive in this region despite the consequences of displacement and broken treaties. Those who hold settler privilege in the city must work to support the Coast Salish people and all Indigenous people using the various forms and wealth and privilege they reap due to it. All right, welcome to any members of the public that we have on the call. Do we have any?
I know Meg Wolf. Who's the other person?
Michaela, I do not believe we have people.
Okay, then I will move on to our Color Brave Space Norms. And if I could have Olivia move on or whoever's advancing the slides.
One. Olivia's trying to trouble she with Robin on the phone and.
There you go.
There we go. Thank you. All right. I am going to ask one commissioner to identify one of these Color Brave Space Norms and speak to the particular relevance that the norm that they've selected has to today's meeting agenda. And I am looking through the attendance list and I'm gonna call on Diana.
Thank you. I will select Create a Space for Multiple Truths while prioritizing and believing lived experiences of racism. And I think this is particularly relevant for today's discussion where lived experience and understanding people's perspectives in different life stages becomes incredibly important as we approach our work and think about the future of the city.
Very good, very apropos for today's agenda. So speaking of our agenda, today we have a briefing from Seattle's Anti-Ages-ism Training from the Age Friendly Seattle, as well as an update from the Director of the Seattle Department of Construction and Inspections. But first, we have our first official item of business, which is to approve the meeting minutes from the July 11th, 2024 meeting. Before I call for a motion, I just want to confirm that we do have quorum?
We do.
Okay, wonderful. All right, can I have a motion to approve the July 11th, 2024 minutes?
I'll just move.
And a second?
About seconds.
Right. Any changes or amendments? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Nay? Any abstentions? And with that, the July 11th, 2024 meeting minutes are approved. Moving on to the Chairs Report, we have a few upcoming Commission meetings. Despite it being summer, we are still continuing to convene as a group. Our next full Commission meeting is scheduled for Thursday, August 8th from 3:00 to 5:30 p.m. And that meeting is going to be a hybrid meeting, so there's options to participate both via Microsoft Teams as well as in-person in the Boards and Commissions Room at Seattle City Hall. And we have our next Housing and Neighborhoods Committee for next Thursday, August 1st, from 7:30 to 9:00 a.m. And that will be held online only via MS Teams. And Vanessa, if you are feeling ready, I would now pass it over to you for some announcements and Commission business.
Sure, thank you very much. As noted before, this meeting is being held in a hybrid fashion with some members, most members of the Commission participating online, now that we are all online on the same place. We do have our new, soon-to-be-appointed Get Engaged member with us here in the room. And I will let them introduce themselves when we go through the introductions. I want to apologize to everybody on the call for the technical difficulties that we are experiencing, even more than usual this morning. So I have not heard, I've not received any public comments, so we won't have public comment this morning. And I'm going to ask Michaela to start a round of introductions. Then I have one more announcement, and then we will move on to our presenters, who I am trying to let into the meeting as we speak. So Michaela, I'll hand it to you.
All right, good morning. My name's Michaela Daphern. I use she/her pronouns. I live in Capitol Hill and I work in affordable housing policy and planning. And I will pass it to Jamie.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Jamie Strobel. I use she/her pronouns. And I work in climate change and environmental justice and live in the future 130th Station area. And I will pass it to Rose.
Morning. Rose Lucello. It's in pronouns. They them. I live up north in Lakewood Springs and I work as a wetland biologist and permitting specialist with Jacobs Engineering. Pass it to Monica.
Good morning, everyone. Sorry, my different screens. My name is Monica Sharma. I use she/her pronouns. I work in policy and organizing for equity in youth sports and physical activity. And I live in the Central District. And I will pass to Zio.
Morning, y'all. Zio Alvarez. She they pronouns. I live in White Center Highland Park and I'm a designer with Allman Architects Downtown. And I'm the current Get Engaged member. Pass it to Matt.
I'm Matt Hutchins. I use he/him pronouns. I'm an architect. I live in West Seattle. And let's see, I pass it to Andy.
Hi, Andy Denenberg. He/him. Live in Northeast Seattle. And I teach at University of Washington in Public Health and Urban Planning. And I'm not sure who hasn't gone yet.
How about Diana? Good morning, Diana Quintanilla. I use she/her pronouns. I live in Capitol Hill. For my day job, I'm a multi-modal transportation planner. And I'll pass it over to Jamie, I believe. Unless she's got. I already went. Oh, sorry. How about Nick?
Good morning.
May or may not.
Good. My internet might be unstable, sorry. My name is Nick Whipple. I use he/him pronouns. I live in West Seattle in the North Del Ridge neighborhood. And for my day job, I am a city planner. I'll pass to staff.
One more person to add, and that would be our soon-to-be-new Get Engaged member. Please go ahead and introduce yourself.
Hey, everybody. It's Matt Malloy. And I'm the future Get Engaged member for this Commission. I work at the Queen Amber Hall and also substitute teach at Billings Middle School. And I use he/him pronouns. Good to see you guys.
Morning, everyone. Olivia Baker. I use she/her pronouns. And I'm staff of the Commission.
And I will wrap this up. My name is Vanessa Murdock. I use she/her pronouns. I'm the Executive Director of the Planning Commission. Welcome, everybody. Before I turn it back to Michaela, I'd like to thank commissioners for submitting your nominations for Commission leadership. Leadership of the Planning Commission, which constitutes the co-chairs of the Commission as well as co-chairs of the Committees, is determined by the Commission itself. Commissioners nominate their colleagues. And I collect all the nominations, contact the individuals, and then present you all with a slate of leadership. And I am pleased to present the following slate for a vote of this body. Commission co-chairs, Michaela Daphern and Jamie Strobel. Housing and Neighborhood Committee co-chairs, Matt Hutchins and Nick Whipple. Land Use and Transportation Committee co-chairs, Monica Sharma and Caleb Toolday. I'd like to ask for a motion and a second to approve the slate.
Rose, motion.
Thanks, Rose.
The second. Sorry.
Sorry. Yes, Zio, seconds.
Thank you. Any changes or amendments to the slate as proposed? Hearing none, I will call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Any abstentions? The leadership slate passes unanimously from those who are present in the meeting. Thank you all for voting. And thanks to the incoming and continuing commissioners who will help lead this body. With that, I will turn it back to Michaela.
Thank you very much. And I just want to express my gratitude for everybody who stepped up and agreed to serve in a leadership position. It is extra work for those who are asked to serve on the Executive Committee. And I, for one, am very grateful that there are so many great folks that I get to work with over the next year as we move through the final phase of the conference of plan update. Vanessa, do we have any new members of the public present? Signed up to make a comment?
No.
No, okay.
We do not. No public comment.
Well, with that, I'm gonna introduce our first set of speakers. Our speakers are here to provide us a briefing on Seattle's Anti-Ages-ism Training. I hope you all had an opportunity to take that training before the meeting. So I'm introducing Dinah Stephens and Meg Wolf, who are both from the Age Friendly Seattle, along with Alex O'Reilly and Barbara Will, who both serve on the Seattle King County Advisory Council for Aging and Disability Services and are joining us to present and discuss on anti-ages-ism training they have developed. And if you haven't had an opportunity to take the training, just note that there are three modules that Vanessa circulated around, and I believe Robin did as well, that were sent in advance of today's meeting. And the modules are titled Anti-Ages-ism Training Overview, Voices of Older Adults, and Solutions for Approaching Ages-ism. And we have 45 minutes for this agenda item. And I extend a warm welcome to Meg, Dinah, Alex, and Barbara.
Hi, y'all. Thanks so much for having us this morning. My name is Dinah Stevens. I'm the Program Manager for Age Friendly Seattle. So I'm just gonna spend a minute or two providing a little background on our initiative itself before I hand it over to our Advisory Council members to really lead the discussion today. So we're looking forward to getting to know this Commission. And I will also add here that we already know some of your staff. We get to work with OPCD on a range of topics. And we have really enjoyed the partnership around the comp plan and other things. So thank you for that. You've got a great team behind you. Age Friendly Seattle was started in 2016, 2017, thereabouts. And we are a citywide initiative. Our mission is to make Seattle a great place to grow up and grow old, which is a very broad mandate. So in order to orient ourselves to the work and figure out what foot to put in front of another, we started asking ourselves, yes, and I see the chat, so thank you for the reminder. Yeah. We started asking ourselves what really helps older adults thrive in later years. And we used life satisfaction as a good proxy for how we'll know when we're thriving. So then we started asking ourselves what helps people retain high life satisfaction as we all age. And it turns out that maintaining continuity in many parts of our lives is really critical to being able to age well. Then we asked ourselves, well, what helps people retain continuity? And based on the research, we boiled it down to really three key resources. So that is our physical resources, meaning our health and wellbeing. The healthier we are, the more we're able to continue doing the things we love physically. Our economic resources, financial resources. So if we can maintain economic stability, we're more likely to be able to age in the home that we want to stay in and the neighborhoods that we love and not have to leave a city or a community that we love. And then finally, our social resources. So if we're able to maintain our connections with our communities, our families, our friends, we're much more likely to have higher life satisfaction later in life. So we looked at factors that impact those three areas. So we really try to focus our work on retaining, helping older adults retain financial, physical, and social resources. And one thing that gets in the way of all of that is ages-ism. So if you took the training, this is probably familiar to you, but ages-ism literally makes us sicker and it harms our health in many different ways. Ages-ism creates financial instability for folks. Ages-ism causes us to lose social connections and prevents us from engaging in our communities. So it felt natural to tackle ages-ism as a topic. And to do so, we created this anti-ages-ism training. The idea had been kicking around for a handful of years. And myself and my colleague Meg, who is also with us today, and Meg really gets most of the credit for this, were able to take it over the finish line last year. So we launched these three modules for City of Seattle employees and have been steadily rolling it out across the city for the last nine months or so. And we recently also launched a public-facing version that we are encouraging members of the public organizations to take and adopt. Part of our rollout strategy has been to have these small group discussions after folks watch the training, because we really find that it's an opportunity to unpack some of the material that you may have absorbed, as well as do a little collective brainstorming around how to incorporate this information into your roles on the Commission and in other spaces in your lives. So we're really lucky that we get to work with our own Aging and Disability Services Advisory Council. And we have a couple members of that here with us today, who I'm gonna pass it over to to really lead the discussion. So big thanks to Alex and Barb for being our anti-ages-ism ambassadors with their peers on other boards and commissions around Seattle. And I will hand it over to you.
Hi, everybody.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Ellen.
Okay, thank you. Hi, everyone. I'm Alex O'Reilly. I am the current Chair of the ADS Advisory Council and have been with the Council for about two years. And I'll turn it over to Barb to introduce herself. Do we see that she's on the meeting? I know she was having trouble getting on, just like we were.
She was. In the meantime, I'll introduce myself real briefly. I'm Meg Wolf. I'm with Age Friendly Seattle. And I was part of the team that created the trainings themselves. So nice to be here. Thank you. Back to you, Alex.
Okay, thank you. So first, we'd like to state, kind of start, I should say, with an icebreaker question and see if we could get some feedback from the Planning Commission about a time in your life, or multiple times, when you felt old and what made you feel that way? So what I'm gonna start with is just kind of my own reflection on that. I personally have been on a competitive women's rowing team for over 30 years. So we practice in the morning. You might see us out on Lake Washington or Lake Union when you drive over the bridge. And when we compete, we compete in a Masters category. And they start with letter A and go up to like H. So, and that's how we are put into races for our competition. And so I'm up to like G or H right now. And so that made me feel like, wow, I'm really getting old. I am going up the ladder in terms of age, in terms of this particular competitive rowing category. And it actually just helped me see, well, I can still be active at this time, but I'm also, as I age, and I'm 75 right now, I can see that there's a place for me in athletics, but I'm gonna be doing it at a different pace, at a different, kind of a different level. Does anyone here on the Commission have any reflections on that? Kind of a ha, a time in your life when you felt old or felt that you were, you know, aging?
Go ahead, Diana. Okay. Hi, Diana Quintanilla. She/her pronouns. I think similarly, I have been someone that would like to try all kinds of activities and exercise, et cetera. And originally from Mexico City and had never really tried bouldering, you know, kind of indoor climbing. Always thought of myself as fearless, right, trying all these things? And realized when I started kind of trying it a year or so ago that heights, all of a sudden, started feeling different. And so in my, basically how resilient I felt to try risk your activities really made me realize that I have changed and it was probably related to age.
Thank you. Anyone else want to share? No? Okay. What we'll kind of move into is some group discussion questions that, again, reflect on some of the learnings or observations you had after taking the training. And we're kind of just really interested and wondering if you had any powerful learning moments during the training or after the training that you would want to share? And what made them powerful to you? Anyone else like to jump in with some reflections on that?
I'm happy to jump in.
Okay.
No, you go, Michaela.
I'm staff. So you go, Michaela.
I, it was a simple comment, but you know, we're all aging all the time. Every single one of us. And so this is actually a cross-cutting issue for every single person who took the training and every single person who lives in Seattle. So, and then the fact that you frame the most vulnerable population that is aging as being older adults. Also, the statistics at the very beginning, I think of the first module, really resonated with me because it talked specifically about the aging population in the Puget Sound region. And there were some statistics about like a 300% expected to increase 300% over a certain time period in the future. And that, to me, was also just from a planning perspective, really resonant in terms of what they call the Silver Tsunami that's coming our way and what it means for us as commissioners in terms of our obligations to center those populations in our work.
Thank you. Thank you, Michaela. Anyone else have any reflections that you want to share after the training? After viewing the training?
I can share that I.
Thank you.
Okay. I used to work in accessibility retrofit for homeowners in Seattle. And I really learned that it's very, very difficult to age in place in Seattle. And the training, really, the emphasis on continuity and the emphasis on, you know, not every older person ends up relocating in their older years. That really stuck out to me as kind of a challenge that we have in this city and an opportunity for some improvement.
Thank you. That's, I would say that's something that members of the ADS Advisory Council talk about a lot. And actually, we have a, have a member who is, one of our members is actually heads up the, I'm just blanking on the name, the Dinah. Would you like to tell me the name of our accessible?
The Universal Design, Northwest Universal Design.
Northwest Universal Design, thank you. Yeah, and we talk a lot about that, about how the universal design is not only good for people who are aging, but actually for many other members of the population. You know, for example, families with children who need curb cuts so that they can get their strollers across the street more readily or just in the house. Sometimes people who are quite young have a temporary disability. They may have been having foot surgery or something like that and are on a knee scooter for several months. That's a personal experience of mine. And basically, need certain accommodations within the house that are really difficult to do on the spot. And if they've been built into the environment, they're a lot easier for people to kind of make sure that they can get their basic needs met during even a short-term disability period. So thank you for bringing that up, Monica. Anyone else? Okay. Well, one thing actually that Michaela mentioned, that, you know, this, of course, is something, this kind of concept of anti-ages-ism is something that ADS staff has been wanting to, you know, kind of help other departments use as a lens and other boards and commissions use as a lens as they do their work. So does anyone else have some ideas of how you might use this information as you work, as you work as Planning Commissioners? One of them is, of course, around universal design in terms of what you are looking at in terms of housing that's being built or that's being remodeled in the City of Seattle. But other ways that this might be something you will kind of pull out as a concept as you do your planning work?
Go ahead, Michaela.
I don't know why. It's like, am I chairing myself? Like, I guess I could call it myself, but Alex, I defer to you and your colleagues in terms of managing the conversation, given that this is really supposed to be a discussion. Even though I'm chairing the meeting, the floor is yours. But one of the things that we're, we think a lot about and have put a lot of time and energy into trying to think about strategy behind is what measures Seattle should employ in the future related to addressing and stemming and repairing harm from displacement? And thinking through Monica's comments that she just made around sometimes that the best outcome for folks is to age in place within their communities, their life outcomes, and their social connections might be stronger that way. And I think it's a really, it's a lens I don't think I've heard us sort of like bring in as much, or at least as coherently and centered in the way we talk about displacement. But I would suspect that if we went and looked at the data, if we looked at the outmigration of households that are lower income and BIPOC out of Seattle, it probably is older folks who may be doing that by choice to, you know, if they own a home, maybe they need to move into a different phase of life and they need that equity. But I'm not sure that all of those outmigrations have been by choice. And that overall harms not just them, but it harms all of us who live in their communities as well.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, and thank you for the opportunity. I am seeing hands up, so I'll go ahead and call on people that way. I wasn't sure what the protocol was, but thank you very much, Michaela. So I see Diana saying your name correctly?
Okay, Diana, thank you. I don't know if there was anyone else, since I've already provided a comment today. If there was anyone else in the queue, please jump in.
Okay, I haven't seen, I'm looking through the photos and I think you're on. Thank you.
I think, you know, interestingly enough, it's about creating the language and, you know, around these topics that really matters because, you know, luckily, the Commission works and advocates to really create communities that allow for people to live, you know, age in place and think about these communities. So what is in the public realm, as you mentioned, universal design in terms of housing and affordability? Creating affordable options that could allow folks that with their retirement income or, you know, support can stay in these communities and afford to live in the City of Seattle. That's, you know, one of the topics that we focus on. Transportation access and making sure that we can create safe roads. Transportation access and making sure that we can create safe roads. You know, on the one hand, it's around safety. So are we timing our signals to cross the street at the speed at which seniors can cross? We never do. Right? It's all about prioritizing cars. It's not about prioritizing people perhaps with, you know, with, with some kind of device to support them to cross the street to cross at that speed because we prioritize speed of cars over the need of the fear of crossing the street for, for our seniors and elders. And creating transportation options that accommodate the needs of folks that cannot walk larger distances to get from their home to destinations, to access food, to access services, to access hospitals, et cetera. You know, how can we create proximity? And, and what we call 15 minute cities is really an anti-agingism policy and approach and vision. And, you know, I could go on forever, but really how we design our, our public realm, how we design for safety and proximity and how we design for affordability and access are really all anti-ages strategies that can be embedded into our comprehensive plan and planning policies.
Thank you so much. Those are excellent ideas. And again, those come up all the time with our advisory council. Just to comment on what you mentioned, Diana, about the, for example, transportation and walking across the streets. It's not only that, but as we know, there's especially during the summer, so many transit projects going on and someone who is even just slightly mobility challenged, maybe they just have to use a cane or maybe a walker, let alone a wheelchair. And sometimes when they get to an intersection that they've always crossed or there was a sidewalk there previously, it's gone because there's some big construction project going on. And so that really, that's really something to be thinking about in all of our realms, all of the, the different areas that we use, including, you know, transportation, as you mentioned. And that, that can make or break a person's day. Maybe they're trying to get to a grocery store. They're trying to get to a doctor's appointment. And that definitely changes the whole day for them, you know, and often in not a good way. So thank you for bringing up all those ideas. Anyone else? I'm looking to see anyone else that actually are there, are there projects that you are working on right now that this could be? That you could apply some of what you learned after the training? Oh, Jamie, thank you. I see you. Go ahead.
I was gonna say, this doesn't really answer that question, but I'm just reflecting on on something we've talked about for a long time of a lot of what we work on as a commission is looking at kind of all of the systems and structures and policies that go in place in order to create and result in the built environment that we have, right? So we are looking at that, those long-term things such as the comp plan. We're looking at at zoning, we're looking at incentives, we are looking at what are the ways that what are the things that actually result in the physical built structure of our, of our communities? And, and we've talked about before how we, how in some cases there are places where that has resulted in a lot of townhouses, for example, or or there are apartment buildings that are walk-up or multi-story or, and how there is a lack of kind of single level housing in, in the city, whether that's like stacked flats or, or just single story houses or cottages or whatever it is, just from an accessibility standpoint, it's, it's more challenging if we do not have places for folks to kind of age in place where there aren't a lot of stairs and like three stories of, of town, like in a townhouse, for example. And so we, I think we play a significant role in, in being able to make sure we're considering those things and how do we help incentivize and be able to provide more opportunities and more diversity of housing types in order to support folks who might be aging in place.
Exactly. Thank you. Yeah. And again, on our, our council, our advisory council, there, the idea of housing comes up quite a bit and we've had, you know, a lot of discussions related to and someone else, I think Michaela mentioned this, is the outflow of older adults from the city a conscious choice? Or is it because there aren't options available, enough options that are affordable for people? And so I think that's a real interesting way to kind of change the, change the, the lens as, as everyone goes forward, again, in all departments and all areas. And thinking about, again, the, the data, I think Michaela also mentioned, you know, the data that's put forward in the present, in the presentation and the training, it's pretty striking, especially folks who are 85 plus, the increase of people who are older, older adults as well, you know, which has a whole nother special kind of set of needs, you know? Yeah. So just, and please let me know, Michaela, I know because of the team's issue, we're kind of, I'm, I'm not sure about the timing and I don't want to take more time than, than is allowed it, given the kind of a new timeline. And I know you have other business on your agenda for sure. But let me know if, you know, how much more time we have to kind of talk about it because I have a couple more questions, but we can definitely go to the wrap up. And I know Dinah and Meg might have some other things they want to mention, so.
It's about 13 minutes, so we're good on time, I think, for a few more questions. I, I was wondering if any of you, any of you, if your council or if Age Friendly Seattle is doing any research around what the housing gaps are for the 85 plus? I know when I was reviewing Seattle's comprehensive plan, one of the questions I have when I was looking at some of the data was, do we have enough nursing homes? And I know that's not necessarily like a government, you know, delivery thing, but I, I'm just sort of curious if we are set up well for ensuring, you know, there's assisted living facilities and nursing care facilities for folks as they age within the city. And I just have no idea.
I'm happy to, to jump in on that, Alex, if you want.
Yeah, no, go for it. Thank you, Dinah.
That's a great question. I think, you know, the short answer is probably like, no, we're not, we don't have enough housing for anyone of any age, right? I will say, so I think I'm going to break your question into two components. One, when it comes to long-term care, Washington State is actually quite a leader in terms of having a Medicaid waiver that allows us to provide long-term care services in people's homes. And so we actually have a lower rate of people having to move into assisted living facilities than many states. I think it's us and I want to say Minnesota that kind of vie for number one and two in the nation around that. And so I think the crux of the question is not so much, do we have enough nursing homes, but do we have enough caregivers to be providing care in people's homes? So that people are not forced to then move. And there's a lot of benefits to keeping folks in their homes. A, people want to stay in their homes. But also it's, you know, much more cost effective for the system at large as well. So one thing that I'm working on, I'm leading a pilot project actually from our human resources department to explore a particular model of home care delivery that will hopefully be a little more efficient. So we're able to maximize the existing workforce in a better way. It's not a silver bullet. There's, this is a big national crisis. I think you mentioned those demographic trends, like we have this aging population and who are living longer, all of us, which is wonderful, but that means we need a lot of support later in life for more years. And we just don't have a caregiver workforce that's keeping up with it. So I think the nursing home question is more of a workforce question than a facilities question. And then when it comes to just sort of housing more broadly to age in place, one thing that we've also been working on in partnership with this Northwest Universal Design Council that Alex mentioned is really trying to get a lay of the land of what have other cities done around the country when it comes to zoning policies and other regulations to allow for more aging in place? So whether that's visitability laws, some are mandated, some are suggested essentially that, you know, have certain code compliance issues that tag along with them, or whether it's other measures and trying to understand not just what has been tried, but what has worked and what avenues have been tried, you know, via codes or comp plans or regulations, legislation. So would be happy to share that with this, this group as well, if that's of interest to, to kind of paint the picture of various options that have been explored around the country.
I think that would be of keen interest to us, definitely. Yeah. So Vanessa can circulate that after the meeting. That would be wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah, and I, I just wanted to add that the Advisory Council has a very proactive advocacy subcommittee as well. And so to the issue of the lack of long-term care workforce, we are also really focusing on some things that are coming up. And we don't know yet what will be in the 2025 legislative, the state legislative agenda exactly related to support for not only the paid long-term care workforce, but also for family caregivers, which is another place that is really, they're burning out, basically, you know? Many people are trying to care for their older adult family members or kids that have disabilities that are, they're not formally paid or outside of the home family givers, but they, I mean, or caregivers. But we're also looking at legislation that will help provide supports for them, you know, giving them respite care and that kind of thing. So I think it's, it's a whole package. So it's the actual built environment as well as the workforce and universal design. So it's kind of like a big, a big picture, kind of a macro look of how to provide you know, provide support for aging in place. And I think that's why our, our Advisory Council is so excited about this anti-aging training and anti-aging program that's being circulated and also going out to the communities as Dinah mentioned. So I'm advocating for the community center in my, or the senior center in my, in my neighborhood, which is Greenwood to maybe have this kind of training available. So, so anyway, what I think, well, just one last question and a lot of it's come up.
Oh, Alex, I see there's two hands up right now.
Oh, thank you.
We, I believe Monica and Andrew in that order.
Thank you so much. Monica.
Yeah, thank you both. I know I probably could have jumped in, but I am also curious a little bit about what kind of work, I mean, I know fall prevention is like a big part of this conversation and I know there's a lot of lacking support for fall prevention, especially for homeowners. And I'm just wondering what kind of involvement you have in projects relating to fall prevention and kind of advocacy that you do around that.
I'll let Dinah take that for Meg. Thank you. Thanks, Monica.
So I'll say that Aging and Disability Services, the unit on the whole, does a lot of fall prevention education and a direct to client work. One area that is kind of interesting from a planning perspective is home modifications and that within a context of fall prevention. I also think a lot about affordable housing where we know a lot of people are aging. I learned recently, you may know this, that there are more older adults living in non-senior affordable housing than senior housing at this point because folks are just aging in place, but those spaces are not set up for aging in place. And so we have kind of a, a program that allows PTs to work with, or occupational therapists rather, to work with nurses and repair people to really drill down and figure out like, how do we modify this home so that it's safer and can prevent falls? So that's, that's one example. And then I think just more broadly, this idea of how do we build from the get-go so that we, we prevent falls because that is a major, major problem and something that I'm learning increasingly more about professionally and personally.
Yeah, thank you. And I also will say, I don't know specifically, but sometimes I used to work for the city of Bellevue and in human services and sometimes fire departments will have programs also. And I'm not sure the city of Seattle does, but where they would come in and like do, do a walk through the house and just point out the areas where people could, you know, take away a throw rug or add a grab bar, that kind of thing. So we'll go to Andrew. Thank you for waiting, Andrew. Sorry to miss you earlier.
No, no, no problem. Quick question on just the funding. People with resources can get into a very nice assisted living place, but people without resources, what kind of options are there? What, who, who can pay for it and what happens?
Yeah, that's a big question.
Thanks, Dinah.
And without having kind of the, the various income thresholds at my fingertips right now, happy to send that as a follow-up. I think one of the biggest challenges is actually not, certainly folks who have very low incomes have a unique set of challenges. But often folks who have kind of the middle band of income who don't necessarily qualify for the low income services really do face a significant struggle when it comes to accessing care, whether that's long-term care, care support in a facility or even at home. So unfortunately, I don't have a good answer for you because there, there just isn't really one. But it's definitely a challenge that is getting increasing attention, I think. And there's some efforts at the state level to kind of finesse some of those bands so that more people are able to qualify for more services. Of course, that takes resources, so it's always a, a battle. But I'm happy to send out the details to, to folks later.
Hey, thank you, Dinah, for jumping in on that. So, Michaela, let me know, we have just about a three minutes, maybe two minutes now. So Meg or Dinah, is there anything you want to kind of wrap up this discussion with?
I can wrap up just with a couple logistics and then Dinah can close us out at the end. I wanted to let everyone know, I'm so grateful for this conversation and we have a little thank you snack pack that we're going to distribute to you somehow. I'm connecting with the liaisons and we'll be sure to get them out to you. We've been mailing them. We can do that or we can get them to an in-person meeting that you're in. It has some snacks as well as a little button that says I heart aging in it. And we'd love you to represent us out in any community that you're in. I've been stopped on the street of downtown Seattle to be asked about my I heart aging. I am asked on the sounder train. I mean, it comes up with all kinds of great conversations. So it's an opportunity to do your work and kind of get your little elevator speech out there. So that's our thank you for being part of this discussion and lending time. And then definitely we would love to be able to follow up in about six months to just check in and see if you've, you have any insights or opportunities that you've had to think differently about this work. Just, it's been a really ripe discussion and we're so grateful for that. So with that, I'll pass it off to Dinah to close us out.
Yeah, and I'll just underscore the thanks that Meg has already shared and, you know, really think of us as a resource. So as you're digging into this work, as you're thinking about these issues, let us know if we can help provide data, other pieces of information. I'll go ahead and, and make sure as a follow-up that we share a couple tools that we've created. We also have a age-friendly GIS map that really shows where folks are living around the city and aging. I can't promise that you can access it without a seattle.gov email address yet, but that is the goal. But certainly happy to pull information from that and, and share. I can also share a strategic framework that has a bunch of data points around kind of this aging demographic and the trends locally here. And then certainly that, that list of policies, housing-related policies when, when that's ready. And then I'll say also, we will be at this year's Seattle Design Festival with an installation all about accessible design. So come down and check us out. And I think that's it. Just really a lot of gratitude for the conversation today.
Yeah, and I just see Diana has a hand up and one last thing you want to tell us?
Super quick. And, you know, it can be more of a follow-up, super interested in the GIS information and seeing how the One Seattle Plan, the One Seattle Comprehensive Plan aligns with where density of people aging in Seattle is. So incredibly interesting to us to have a view of. So incredibly interesting to us to have a view of that. But also, you know, for the future would be interesting to hear if you were at all involved in the process and participated in the one, development of the One Seattle Plan and kind of like what we're, if you're seeing your suggestions reflecting, reflected in the plan.
I can very quickly answer yes. So we've been involved in the process. I've been the liaison for Human Services Department. The staff at OPCD has been great about having conversations around aging and we certainly have suggested a number of things and excited to see some of those being incorporated. We held a joint event actually at a senior center downtown so that OPCD staff could share top-level lines from the comp plan and hear firsthand feedback from older adults who are living downtown. So yes, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And just the last thank you from, I'm representing the Aging and Disability Advisory Council. So as a fellow council or commission member, I really want to tell you how much we appreciate your work and again, appreciate you taking the time on your agenda for talking about this, this topic. That's very important to us. It's the core of our work at ADS. So thank you.
Yes. Thank you guys so much for your time. I know we're always keen on connecting with other councils and commissions because there's, there's so many cross-cutting issues across the different councils and commissions in Seattle and joint, joint ones with King County. So thank you for your service. Thank you again for your time today.
Thanks so much.
All right, bye.
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 Vanessa, do we have our next speaker here?
Our next speaker is live and in real life right here.
IRL, okay. All right. Well, with that, I will give him a few minutes to get settled in at the table while I do an introduction. Our next agenda item is we will hear from Nathan Torgelson, the Director of the Seattle Department of Construction and Inspections. He's joining us today as he does a couple of times a year, I think, to provide us an update on the work of his department. And we have 25 minutes for this agenda item and just want to say, I really look forward to these updates every year. I find these fascinating. And so thank you again for joining us and I'll turn the floor over to you.
Great. Can you all hear me? Good morning. I am delighted to be back in front of the Planning Commission. I believe the last time I was here was late last year.
Something like that.
I want to start out by talking about some of the organizational changes that are happening at SDCI and these will all be effective by the end of July. Some of them have already happened and some of them will be happening shortly. Last year, SDCI went through a pretty comprehensive strategic planning process. There was also a city auditor's report on our permitting process, focusing on the construction permitting process. And I know I talked about that at our last meeting. And also the mayor's housing sub-cabinet has suggested a number of changes for our department. So one of the biggest changes is that our land use division that oversees master use permits and the design review program and any discretionary decisions. And our engineering services division, which oversees the technical aspect of permit applications. Those two divisions have merged into one division. That'll be called the Land Use and Engineering Services Division for now. And Darlene Edwards, who was the Division Director for Land Use, is the new Division Director for that combined division. We have created a brand-new division called the Customer Success Division. And this division's focus is to help applicants to complete their applications when they submit and to help guide them through the whole permitting process. And Andy Higgins, who was the former Engineering Services Director, is now the new Director of this division. So the key rationale and benefits of creating this new Customer Success Division is clear ownership of the initial customer service. We have a lot of one-time applicants. We have many frequent flyers, but we have many one-time applicants. And we are finding that they are still having challenges submitting a complete application and making their way through our complex regulatory process. So this new Customer Success Division is meant to provide additional support for those applicants, make sure they submit a complete application and then help them at various points along the way. So it provides clear ownership of customer service. There's a triage process if they have challenges going through the permitting process. It will help reduce errors in that initial application process and will also provide cross-divisional visibility to customers and identify some of those key customer roadblocks. So we're super excited about this change and hope that our applicants see some improvements as they go through the application process. Another major change is many of you know Mike Podowski, who heads up our land use code development team. That office is currently in the Director's Office and we are transferring Mike's team to the new Land Use and Engineering Services Division. This will help provide even better coordination between land use code development and implementation. It will put Mike's team closer in collaboration with our land use planners who are actually reviewing the permits. And it will also allow for better coordination between the land use code development team and the technical code development team. The technical code development team is headed up by Micah Chappell in our department and they work on all of the technical codes such as the building code, the energy code, et cetera. Finally, the last major change is we are creating a new finance division. Finance used to be part of our organizational strategy and support division. That division is headed up by Danielle Priest. So Shane Mukau, who's our finance director, will head up a brand-new division that will report directly to me. And that will help me be more in line with what's going on with the budget process and help put Shane in closer contact with our elected officials as we go through the budget process. I want to talk a little bit about customer service. Of course, I talked about the new Customer Success Division that we have created. The last time I was here, I talked about a new land use information desk on the fourth floor of the Seattle Municipal Tower. That has been operational since December. And earlier this year, the Seattle Department of Transportation co-located with us in that location. That information desk is located, again, on the fourth floor of the Seattle Municipal Tower and is back by the elevator bank for the parking garage. The security at the front of the Seattle Municipal Tower is greatly relieved that that service desk is now available. Of course, during the pandemic, we closed the applicant service center on the 20th floor and that service center continues to be closed. Most of our customers who need help with questions are going through the virtual applicant service center where you can live chat with someone and then be connected to a staff person. But we still have a lot of customers who don't have technology resources. That was kind of a surprise to me, but many applicants don't have computers or even smartphones. And we have many applicants that just prefer to talk to someone in person and not through a screen. So in some cases, the people who are at those, at that desk on the fourth floor can't answer every question, but we can connect them at that information desk with specific staff people, whether that staff person might be working at home that day or that staff person is in the Seattle Municipal Tower. The other change I wanted to mention is that we'll be soon be implementing a whole new phone tree system. We at SDCI have too many phone numbers right now for the general public. It's confusing for the public. They don't necessarily know which phone number to call. So that change will be implemented later. So I want to talk a little bit about permitting. It's not a surprise that permitting activity is down pretty significantly. Before the pandemic, SDCI went through an exercise with the mayor at the time and the city council where we revised our whole permit fee ordinance. Our permit fees hadn't been raised in eight years. And the economy was doing really well, but of course, we always have ups and downs in our economy. And so one of my key priorities when I became a director eight years ago was to look at that permit fee ordinance. So we weren't in a scenario where when the economy went down, we would have to lay off a ton of staff. And that is not always, that is not a good scenario because the economy will always come back. And then we are always behind the eight ball where we have to go to council, get position authority, advertise, train staff. And we're always a couple of years behind in the permit boom. So the very situation we planned for, we're experiencing right now. The big question I know that's on everyone's mind is will there be budget cuts? We're looking at that right now. Don't have any specific answers as we go through the budgeting process with the mayor's office. The city budget will be delivered to the city council at the end of September. Just a reminder that our department is 92% fee-driven and general fund is only 8% of our budget. I know a lot of the focus on the budget has been on the decline in general fund dollars. So any budget cut that we would have to make to the general fund should be pretty minor. I included in the notes that our permitting levels for building permits and for master use permits are down fairly significantly. The number of master use permit applications is down and that's for a variety of reasons. There is state legislation which basically exempts housing permits from SEPA review. So that means we have fewer projects going through SEPA review right now. So we'll see with the future holds. I am cautiously optimistic. Hopefully, interest rates will come down a bit. That is absolutely influencing the market right now. We have a lot of smaller projects coming in, but don't have a lot of the larger projects. Some of the major projects that we do see on the horizon, Memorial Stadium is going to have a phased submittal. We're expecting the first permit in by the end of the year. That is a really exciting project, I think, for the city and a collaboration with the school district as they own that property, but also a great collaboration with the Seattle Center. The light rail master use permits should come in early in 2025. And Northgate continues their complete redo and expansion. Of course, we have the Kraken Ice Complex out there now, which has been a huge success and is extremely busy. And last week, Northgate broke ground on their first housing project. And when all is said and done, they're expecting over a thousand units of housing in that location, which I think is great news. The Northgate Urban Center is nowhere near their housing goal spelled out in the comprehensive plan. And it really is an ideal location for housing with the light rail station at Northgate. And also now with the expansion of the pedestrian bridge over I-5, which helps connect to those neighborhoods and to North Seattle College, which is a major employer in the city. Want to talk a little bit about amendments to the land use code. We sent legislation to the city council to promote downtown street activation to provide some additional flexibility on a three-year basis for uses that could be located at the ground level in our downtown. Councilmember Morales has some concerns with that proposal and for now has tabled that legislation. It's possible it could come back, but that remains to be seen. Legislation that did recently pass at council unanimously is the commercial to residential conversion. The Office of Planning and Community Development led that legislation, but our department was very much involved. We are involved on the building code side. We did not make changes to our building code to allow for the commercial to residential conversion because every project is a little bit different from a building code perspective. But our staff are working for flexibility for these projects. Every building is different. The key contenders for this conversion tend to be older Class B and Class C office buildings. They have smaller floor plates, so they lend themselves much better to housing conversion with more ability to have smaller units with windows. Design review exemption legislation was recently sent to council. This is focused on downtown, South Lake Union, Uptown and First Hill. This legislation, if passed by the city council, will exempt residential projects within those neighborhoods from design review and will also exempt research and development projects from going through design review. So speaking of design review, there are numerous changes being looked at for the design review process. This is coming from House Bill 1293 at the state legislature. Basically, that House bill will require design review changes to be in place by six months after the comprehensive plan is adopted. That legislation basically limits jurisdictions to one public meeting for design review and also says that the design review guidelines must be objective. And also that by going through the design review process, projects cannot see a reduction in height, bulk and scale below the development regulations that are in place in the land use code. So we are working along with the Office of Planning and Community Development on what those design review changes might look like and will be going through a public process very shortly. Every two years, we pass what we call omnibus legislation, which is a series of more minor code amendments. This legislation has just been sent to the city council and will be at the land use committee on September 4th and 18th. There are a number of minor changes in that legislation, including removing old language about SEPA, adding severability clause to the ordinance that protects legislation in case a judge strikes down any specific provision in legislation. And it also removes parking from consideration under SEPA review and that is per change in state law. It also has to do with some legislation with hotel development in Belltown to allow some additional flexibility for living buildings, which I'll talk about in a minute. Another big change that's coming to the land use committee at council on August 7th, September 4th, and if necessary, on September 18th, is changes to our building and technical codes. Like the Planning Commission, the city has a construction codes and advisory board, otherwise known as CCAB, that advises our department on any changes we're proposing to the technical codes. The technical codes are usually less visible or controversial than land use code changes, but we have seen a lot of real high-profile building code changes. But we have seen a lot of real high-profile building code changes proposed as part of this cycle. The legislation that was just sent to council includes several amendments to incentivize voluntary public safety improvements to unreinforced masonry buildings. In the past, at this meeting, I've talked about unreinforced masonry buildings. We are working hard on a mandatory unreinforced masonry upgrade ordinance. Again, that has not yet been adopted and there'll be a gradual timeline for when buildings would have to come into compliance. And we've been working really hard with Congresswoman Jaapal on federal incentives to help building owners who can't afford to make those upgrades. That being said, we know that there are some building owners who want to make these changes right away. They may be going through renovations that they're building to begin with and it makes sense for them to do all these changes at once. So the legislation that's going to forward will provide standards in place for those building owners to make those changes so their buildings are earthquake safe. Back to the technical codes and the energy code. Historically, Seattle has been far more aggressive than the state on our energy code requirements. Given the current state of the economy, the mayor's emphasis on housing production and the fact that state requirements are much more aggressive under the leadership of Governor Inslee. What the city is proposing in this round of energy code improvements is largely similar to the state. The state has already adopted their requirements, so the city needs to fairly quickly adopt our requirements as well. Some of the changes we are looking at to plan for the future is that commercial kitchens in new buildings have to have the capacity for future electrification. For existing buildings, we are providing some flexibility. There are many existing buildings that are going through HVAC improvements or maybe a change of use. We are exempting affordable housing, hospitals, nonprofits, and buildings that require major utility service upgrades from those improvements. And we are allowing buildings to retain 50% of their gas heating capacity. And again, this is for existing buildings where it's much more complicated to make these improvements. All of these existing buildings, though, that are going through these changes have to complete a future decarbonization plan that would include engineers, schematic design, and cost estimates for that future conversion to heat pumps. So again, this legislation will be going to Councilmember Morales's committee and that first meeting is coming up shortly on August 7th. Last but not least, I mentioned earlier, living building legislation. This will be at the Land Use Committee on September 4th and 18th. These, this legislation has to do with projects going through the Living Building Pilot Program where height bonuses are allowed to exceed 145 feet in height, regardless of a lot limit size that exists in our downtown mixed residential zone in Belltown. Again, this legislation provides clarity on the incentive for living buildings downtown and these buildings are very innovative and can help reduce environmental impacts.
I hate to interrupt, but I do need to do a time check.
I'm done.
You are done, okay, okay.
Excellent timing.
Perfect, we have run out of time for any questions. And so there is, it's okay, it's not your fault. We had a technical issue this morning that delayed us and we're catching up. There is one question in the chat box, Vanessa, from Matt, that perhaps Nathan could answer and you could circulate an answer via email after the meeting regarding the timeline. Yeah, okay.
Any additional questions that commissioners have, I'm happy to respond to in writing.
Wonderful, wonderful. Well, thank you so much again for coming. Appreciate SDCI's transparency and willingness to kind of share your continual endeavors towards improvement and efficiency and your customer service orientation. So thank you very much. I think I have one announcement, which would be when we're meeting next. Nope, I have no announcements to make. And with that, the July 25th Seattle Planning Commission meeting is adjourned. Bye, everybody. Thanks all.
Bye y'all.
Thanks, everyone.